...the actual concrete bridge on top of the temporary bridge.
Originally built in 1932, the Sixth Street Viaduct connected the Arts District to Boyle Heights. But after decades of use, the viaduct started to crumble, and that prompted the city to demolish it in 2016 and begin construction on a more seismically sound structure.
But will the pump be able to reach all the way over to this knuckle?
It does.
Since the $488 million replacement project started, Ellen says the city has taken great strides to increase diversity on the design team.
When I started the project, I was the only woman on the team, and as we've been filling positions, and I look for the best person to fill the position, it's been a woman in many cases, so a lot of our leadership roles on the project are filled by women.
Ellen graduated from UCLA with a degree in civil engineering. After 27 years with the city, she now helps recruit and mentor other women.
She's a role model to me in a way because I see how she carries herself as a female engineer in a male-dominated industry, and I just, I look up to her and I, you know, I learn a lot from her, just how she handles herself.
Julie has been a fantastic mentor, especially to me personally. I work very closely with her every single day, and just the wealth of knowledge that she has and the leadership that she brings to the project from all her past projects, it's really empowering.
The project has created hundreds of jobs, and once it's complete, there will be a park here and more green space for this community.
We're going to be installing 12 acres of new park space that spans all the way from what you see over here on the north side of the bridge, all the way to the 101 freeway. This is a very park-oriented community, and the viaduct structure itself was very, very beloved to the community before, and this new one is going to be an iconic structure, not only for this neighborhood, but for all of Los Angeles.
The project is expected to be completed in 2022. Tribal dances, drums, and entertainment took center stage as hundreds of people gathered at Grand Park to honor Native American culture and history.
Indigenous Peoples' Day in Los Angeles was created on August 30th of 2017 after a nearly two-year process. And that process began with a motion that I introduced to take a look, to do an evaluation, a study of what it would look like, or what it could look like, what the possibilities were of eliminating Columbus Day, and taking a look at a way to honor Indigenous Peoples.
Celebrating Columbus is really predicated on the mythology that he discovered a whole entire hemisphere that was already populated by millions of Indigenous Peoples, and so we're here to set the record straight. Indigenous Peoples have been here since the beginning of time, and we will continue to be here. We're members of beautiful resilient tribal nations all throughout the hemisphere.
This is one indicative of what can happen, you know, as far as history being changed. You know, people want to stand for right. They don't want to stand for wrong. They don't want to be remembered for doing something negative, something wrong, you know, something that would set electricity to certain families and generations and cultures.
Native American Indigenous Days is just the beginning. It's going to spread across the entire world, and it's going to be, it's going to be like Mardi Gras in New Orleans. It's going to be, it's spread, the entire world's going to take place, and everybody's going to do the same thing we're doing here.
Some relief from City Council for renters facing no-fault evictions, a new pilot program helps cool city streets, and the pedestrian bridge in Silver Lake takes shape. All this in City B. The LA City Council unanimously adopted an emergency ordinance aimed at stopping no-fault evictions of apartment rental tenants until January 1st, when the new law that provides similar protections take effect. In Atwater Village, the Steel Trust superstructure of the Red Car Pedestrian Bridge arrived in LA this week and installed. The bridge will connect the communities of Atwater Village and Silver Lake across the LA River. Mayor Eric Garcetti has announced a pilot program that combines cool pavement with shade canopies and trees to help decrease the temperatures on streets and walkways. It's a Hollywood institution that has trained many of today's best-known comedians and funny movie stars, and now Councilmember Paul Coretts is helping the Groundlings celebrate their 45th birthday. Anna Marcos takes a look.
Try to control the weird faces.
Forty-five years of funny stuff, and now the Groundlings Theater and School, a homegrown Hollywood landmark, is getting honored on its birthday by the city and Councilmember Paul Coretts.
I guess it's ironic that I'm doing this because I have no sense of humor, but...
I was kicked out of a serious acting class and told that all I wanted to do was make people laugh.
So you were too funny for acting?
I was too, yes. I was told I was too funny, but when I got to the Groundlings, it's like a family. I found my funny home.
And to think, these guys were just a group of actors back in 1974 who wanted to work on their craft, so they held a workshop. That turned into community performances, which led to jobs on shows like Saturday Night Live, and now the Groundlings is the go-to place when you want funny actors in Hollywood.
I don't think any of us imagined SNL would go on for 45 years. I don't think anybody ever imagined that the Groundlings would be here after 45 years. We were just a bunch of goofballs, you know.
Since 1974, the Groundlings Theater and School has been the foremost comedy training ground in Hollywood and the springboard for countless careers, including comic geniuses from film and television.
Think Melissa McCarthy, Kristen Wiig, Lisa Kudrow, Will Ferrell, Adam Sandler, John Lovitz, just a few superstars like that. But even more than the superstars, the Groundlings have brought laughter and good times to many, even our so-called humorless Councilmember, Paul Coretts.
I went on my second date with my wife, Gail, to the Groundlings, and we had such a great time laughing together that I think that really started a relationship that has lasted 35 years, and so I credit the Groundlings.
What is it you think makes you funny?
Nothing, nothing. And I interrupt people.
So you're not funny?
Not in the slightest.
And you're in the Groundlings?
Yes, I am.
Put that out for me.
I don't know. Mistakes are made constantly in life.
But this is no mistake. Being funny is serious business.
Not that I didn't have fun, but I think I truly took it as I was like, this is like my master's program, and so I took it, I think, very serious.
The Groundlings have also become a community presence with classes for the general public as well as training for corporations like Google and Disney.
And does that help business?
Yes, it helps business. It helps politics, it helps business, it helps families, it helps relationships.
Yes and is the foundation of improv. We build on each other's ideas. Anything is possible.
Apparently, everything in life goes down easier with a little yes-anding and a little laughter. Happy birthday, Groundlings.
For more information on the school or the theater company, visit groundlings.com. The original farmer's market at Third and Fairfax brought everyone together for a good old-fashioned country fair, complete with pig races and pie-eating contests.
We are having our Fall Festival. It's our, an event the farmer's market has been hosting since 1934. And it's basically a county fair in the heart of a big city.
We're going on the bell this time. Listen for the bell. There's the bell, and here's all around Alverton. Are we going to see everybody today? Today, Bob won our first show, so he's out here at the little winner's circle doing photos.
Way down in the bridge mountains, way down where the tall house grows, lives my sweetheart of the mountain, and she's my little Georgia rose.
Right now, we have the minors on behind us, and they've been a favorite. They are here every year. We have bands throughout the weekend.
My little rose that grew in Georgia, with a hair of gold, a heart...
I think it's great for kids. There's not a lot to do in this area with kids, and it was free, which is amazing.
It's nice to bring the kids out. They love petting the animals, and it's just a perfect Saturday to spend time with the family. Say hi.
Hi.
My mom lives across the street. We came to visit her, and she told me there was an amazing fair at the Grove, so we came to walk around. What do you like the most so far that you saw?
Uh, the pig race.
All right, Judge, let's make it official. First place, second. I grew up around animals, and I think everybody should have the opportunity to be around them. They're very special creatures.
I think the reason why Farmer's Market has endured for 85 years is it really is a small village in the middle of the city. You know, most of our businesses are family-owned and operated. People come to Farmer's Market and they feel at home. You know, LA is a big city, so it's nice when you have a place you can just call home.
Enjoying all-access pass to multiple art venues at Grand Park, listen to some great music at a benefit concert, and help celebrate the opening of Metro's Blue Line. All this and things to do. Enjoy a pass to all things artistic throughout Grand Avenue during their all-access celebration. This annual arts event will offer workshops and activities throughout the Grand Park downtown LA area. Enjoy festivities including a scavenger hunt, a gallery talk at the Broad, or attend an LA Opera performance at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion. There is free admission to Mocha and much more. The Grand Avenue Arts All-Access drops Saturday, November 2nd. For details, visit grandavenuearts.org. Don't miss the Silver Lake Conservatory of Music's annual benefit. This highly anticipated evening is the biggest fundraiser for the conservatory, which brings dynamic music education to the people of LA. The evening will be hosted by comedian Marc Maron, with musical acts including Red Hot Chili Peppers. The Silver Lake Conservatory of Music benefit happens Saturday, November 2nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. Learn more at silverlakeconservatory.org. Going Blue just got more exciting. Join Metro LA for Blue Line Celebration, the latest opening of the Blue Metro A-line. The opening will be accompanied by entertainment from local performers, food, community booths, and special giveaways. So don't miss out on the Blue Line Celebration, happening Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at The Block, located at 750 West 7th Street. For more info, visit metro.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityb.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for those items will be held over one week unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present.
Remind me when we get to that point.
Items 18 through 29 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for those items will be held over one week unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present.
Remind me when we get to that point.
Items 18 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
And for the record, the ordinances for 18 and 21 will also be held over. Items 30 through 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
There are cards on item 30, 32, 37, 38, 39, 40, 42, 46, 47, 50, and 51.
Okay, let's hold those items and let's vote on the remaining.
Today is October 29th, want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meeting, this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, would you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonn, Buscayino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, Buscayino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Harris Dawson moves, Price seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, let us rise, will be led today by Mr. Buscayino.
With great honor, as we pledge allegiance to the flag, let us remind ourselves of the sacrifices that've been made from those serving our country and those who did not return. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino, let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue several items, 1A to December 10th, 1B to December 3, 1F to November 5, and item 13 to November 8.
Without objection, continue.
Items 1 through 17 are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
There are cards on item 1 and item 17.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you, next.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for those items will be held over one week unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present.
Thank you, remind me when we get to that point, continue.
Items 18 through 29 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Let's prepare to vote on these items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
And for the record, the ordinances for 18 and 21 will also be held over.
Fine.
Items 30 through 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before this body, do you have cards?
There are cards on item 30, 32, 37, 38, 39, 40, 42, 46, 47, 50 and 51.
Okay, let's hold those items and let's vote on the remaining. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Thank you. Let's call up Mr. Previn. Mr. Previn? You have items 1A through 1G, 17, 30, 32, 37, 38, 39, 42, 46, 47, 50, 51, all the way to 51C. Okay, Mr. Previn is the only multi-speaker, let us, after him, we will close, comment. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, it's Eric Previn, and I appreciate your acknowledging that because it's hard to get over here because there's such a pileup at the Board of Supervisors, but thank you. So getting to the items, first of all, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Harris Dawson for finally coming down here and talking about benefiting the community of Council District 8. I don't know if the Afibah folks are here or if there's been some truce on that, but it's so nice to see him reaching out and trying to connect with the people who are not here today but have been here for maybe a dozen days in a row. Is there a disingenuous, kind of weird, opportunity to kind of jump up and down whenever they're not around? I don't know, sir. All I know is that I am so pleased also to see that finally the heritage celebrations are being moved around sneakily in the background. We have to do it every couple of weeks or months and just slide the money this way and that, and I love all heritage, I mean, I don't think there's anybody who'd disagree. By the way, Brad Sherman today, I don't know where, Krikorian, maybe he's celebrating, announced that the United States Congress, for the first time, is going to acknowledge the Armenian genocide, which is very, is deeply moving for people in Los Angeles because obviously there's a large population and we've been waiting for our government to step forward. It's not the whole Senate and the President, but it's the House, and so I think that's, that's worthy of, of some acknowledgement. Now, in terms of budget and finance and the kind of activity that's been happening, I noted some items from yesterday's agenda are right on this, like the Waste USA doing businesses, waste management here in the region, Greg Smith, where's John Lee hiding? John Lee, these are, this is a big waste company, part of Recycle LA, that you, sir, conspired with Englander and Greg Smith to kind of jam a special election for CD-12, stick the former lobbyist Greg Smith, who, I think everybody loves Greg Smith, stick him in there for six, eight months, and then jack up our election costs to now where we got Holly Walcott throwing her hands up in the air, we got Dean Logan throwing his hands up in the air, who came, who overlooked $6.3 million in election costs that the taxpayers have to cover? And how did that happen for March 2020 when all these great guys are running for office? I don't know. I, I will say, sir, we're going to hold you accountable on that. And by the way, I think the Uber pickup drop-off thing at LAX is going well, so I don't know, I mean, good work on that, I'll give you that. Now, over at the Board of Supervisors, they've got a Drug Enforcement Agency item, and I couldn't help but think of 60 Minutes, where one of our jobs as city council, sir, don't interrupt trouble, I know you look a little concerned.
Then please get on the agenda.
Well, you're upset because I'm going to speak about cannabis.
Mr. Previn, just stay on the agenda, go on, you had.
This guy, this guy is, he's too close to the cannabis. I would like to just.
Mr. Previn, come on, it's, just stay on your item, come on.
Sir, you know.
Mr. Previn, please.
What about flavored cannabis, can I talk about that? No, all right, fine, I'll get back to the agenda. Sir, when we do liens on property, the point there is to clean up the neighborhood. The problem is, is that building and safety, and I want to, I want to recognize Kern Price today because he is the leader, 5,000.
Let's give Mr. Previn his one minute.
And some odd dollars against the constituent, let's, let's put it together for that, thank you, sir, for taking care of that. Yesterday, one of the more cynical displays here at City Hall, we had Krikorian holding court up at Budget and Finance, and we had about 200-plus vendadores. Duarte, even Duarte, he had the short sleeves on because it was a committee day, but it was, he was stressed out, I'll put it that way. There were people who wanted to speak, who had a lot to say, and the weird energy was, the only people in the meeting room were city employees, it was totally weird, there was like a lock at the door. So then the meeting went on, the FSR came out, sorry about the 3% rollback across the board, but we got to cover these labor costs, so I appreciate you're doing it, but they didn't really give the folks an opportunity. People, in fact, practically were turned away, I mean, I don't think they were literally turned away, but waiting 95 minutes before being allowed to speak, I mean, ask Duarte, Duarte would be happy to testify, although he couldn't testify because Faubel wouldn't let him in one of those matters over at the court. But, sir, today, Leo Beck Temple, 11:00 a.m., Coretts and I are going over, hopefully they're going to drop the lawsuit against the city, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, okay. Okay, let's vote on item 1.
And, Mr. President, on item 1, the department recommends that 1C and D be received and filed as the fees have been paid, and 1H and I be received and filed due to owner occupancy, and that 1E and G, that the liens be confirmed.
Thank you. Okay, so let's open the roll. Ms. Rodriguez?
Item 1I, I'd like to move to reduce the lien to $660 in receive and file, please, for 1I.
Okay, let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Let's vote on item 17, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item 30, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the, the vote.
12 ayes.
32, and then items 37 through 40, and 42, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Items 46, 47, 50 and 51, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
We, let's quickly vote on the 12 vote items since we're at 12.
Yes, and those would be the ordinances on items 2 through 12, and item 18 and 19.
Okay, let's vote on what, reconsideration? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, members, before we proceed, we have some very, very special visitors that are with us today. I don't know who they are, but why don't we bring in these costumed, uh... These are the kids from Joy Picas. They're being led by a familiar-looking dinosaur that Alejandro Boo Boo III. I think I know at least one of them. Can we, let's give the kids a round of applause, hi, hi, kids. I think some of the adults are young at heart as well. Oh, this is great. And look at, guys, how quiet they are and how well behaved. We have a little bumblebee. A little mini mouse. Mr. Herman, please have a seat, do not disrupt the children. I think I see a spider girl. Oh, another dinosaur? These are all our kids that are in daycare. Oh, I see a princess, a little princess. Is that a little baby Dodger I see? A little bat boy? I see a bat girl. I see a super baby. Hi, Anne Clark Kent. Oh, their darling. A little skeleton. A little tiger. Astronaut. Another bat girl. I see a good witch. Another princess, oh, I'm telling you. These are some great costumes. A beautiful princess. Oh, another dinosaur. Or is that a dragon? That's a dragon, not a dinosaur. Oh, wait a minute, I have my, my dinosaur. Yeah, members, I've captured a dinosaur. Here, you can take it, I got a little dinosaur. Bye, Boo Boo. Let's give another round of applause for all of the kids. Okay, Mr. Herman. That's your last warning, Mr. Herman. Let's recognize Ms. Rodriguez. Oh, Mr. Harris Dawson, was he on? Is that a, were you on the queue? Technical error.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Buscayino.
Can we take 32 forthwith, 32 forthwith, please?
Okay, 30, item 32 forthwith.
And, Mr. President, there are also requests to take other items forthwith, that would be 36, 40, 47, 48 and 51.
Okay, let's do that. So those items are forthwith. Ms. Rodriguez, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for having me follow the, all the kids, that's really helpful, I appreciate it.
Who was that comedian that did WC Fields or whatever, so I should have let you go before the kids?
No, I'm joking, I'm teasing, that was great.
It's hard to top that.
It is hard to top that, but thank you, colleagues, I'm proud to be joined today by this year's California Big Sister of the Year, Christina Pascucci, if you could please help me give her a round of applause. So a little bit of history, actually, it was about 25 years ago when I was a young staffer here at City Hall, that I used to be on the board for the Latino Advisory Council for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Los Angeles. And it was there that many of my friends, some of whom have joined us here today, were part of an advisory group that would help to produce events for many of the littles of the Big Sisters that would volunteer their time to mentor some of the youth here in our city. I remember back in those days, we would join together, many of the friends, we would join together at the field office of then Congressman Javier Becerra, and we would plan a number of really wonderful events for these youth, particularly a posada that we would hold every year at the Getty Mansion at the time that was available under Mayor Reardon. But it's this unique program that has continued to succeed as a result of the volunteerism and the dedication of people like Christina, that avail themselves of their free time to mentor some of the youth in our community. And so I'm joined today by, of course, this incredible dedicated volunteer, Christina Pascucci, who is no stranger to those of us here in Los Angeles, who has been the Big Sister of her young mentee, Jocelyn, who, since 2012, and so we are joined here by them today. Christina not only is an active member of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Los Angeles and has dedicated so much of her time to supporting that organization since 2012, she's an Emmy Award-winning journalist, a licensed pilot and a humanitarian. She's worked as a reporter and a fill-in anchor for KTLA, LA's number one morning news station since 2011, and recently, the LA Press Club nominated her as Journalist of the Year following her in-depth reporting of the earthquake in Mexico City. Christina is also the first woman in the history of Los Angeles to be appointed to the Los Angeles County Aviation Commission, and we are here today to celebrate Christina, her recognition from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and more importantly, to honor her for her dedication to supporting our youth. Ladies and gentlemen, Christina Pascucci.
Thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you for that introduction, I just want to express my deepest gratitude, I'm so humbled to be standing here before you guys, and... I'm so humbled to be standing here before you guys and, um, to receive this honor, but really, it's about Jocelyn, my little sister, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters. If you're not familiar, Catholic Big Brothers, Big Sisters, incredible organization. Uh, we believe in being defenders of the potential of youth, and there are six hundred kids throughout Los Angeles right now who are waiting to be paired and mentored, and there are three hundred people waiting to be paired with them, but, um, we need funds. So I just want to give a shout out to that, and also just, you know, you can't state enough the ability or, or the way in which you can change a person's life and the trajectory of their life just by showing interest, and that's what this program does. Um, I'm so grateful and thankful and, and humbled to be a part of it, and shout out to Jocelyn, who, we were paired when she was nine years old, and next week, she's turning seventeen, so happy birthday, Jocelyn. And, um, she's going to be going to college next year, and she wants to be a Big Sister herself. So do you want to say anything about what this program has meant to you?
This program means a lot to me because it's helped me in many ways, and, um, hopefully one day I could be a mentor for someone.
Any of the favorite things we've done that you'd want to share?
Um, one of my favorite, um, activities that we've done together was feed the homeless because it made me realize that not everyone has the same things, and it just made me feel that.
Good job. Good. Yay. Thank you. And I think, speaking of homelessness, you know, in, in the midst of this crisis, more than ever, we need compassion, and that's what this organization is about. So, thank you, guys, so much. Oh, wait, final shout out to this tribe right here, my family, my parents, my boyfriend, Jocelyn's mom, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters, who, um, you guys just do amazing, amazing work. Catholic Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I should say. Thank you, guys.
Let's give them a round of applause. I'd like to recognize, uh, Mr. Buscayino, if I may.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for honoring Christina. I have, uh, had a chance over the last few months to get to know Christina and just read her mom and dad, and I reminded her parents that it started at home, the foundation of service, of love, of leading with heart, and I want to recognize Christina, your mom and dad, your, your parents for, uh, guiding you in the right direction, and, and you have blossomed into a, an incredible reporter here in the Los Angeles area. And, and Monica's right, you know, we, we need more, um, women and, and leaders in our youth community to serve our youth, um, like, like, folks like Jocelyn, who, um, that we are reminded that today our youth need so much love and guidance, and we have to make sure that our kids in our city don't fade away, and the Big Brothers, Big Sister program, ensures that we, we lead our kids in the right direction, and, and this, I know it's very difficult, too. It, you, it's a commitment. It really is, a, a lifelong commitment. You can't forget about Jocelyn's birthday, and you, you take her out on outings, and, uh...
She's learning to drive.
And she's learning to drive, and...
Good job.
You know, that big sister that you have, Jocelyn, next to you, is, is someone who just loves you and supports you and, and blesses you, and thank you, Monica, for really recognizing the program. And I want to thank Christina for, for joining us in our official Little Italy launch earlier this month, and as we celebrate Italian-Americans in, in, in our city throughout the month, and we're landing, uh, the end and concluding our Italian-American Heritage Month, it's great that you are here because, um, as Italians do, they lead with their heart, and we want to recognize and love you for that. So congratulations, and thank you, Christina, for all that you do for our kids.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for honoring Christina. I, I do want to mention, though, besides you being an amazing mentor to young women, you also do a lot of work in the human trafficking arena, which you know I'm very passionate about. Christina has actually trekked through the jungles of Cambodia to save young girls from this horrific, horrific crime that plagues all of our countries, unfortunately, which is this human trafficking issue. So I want to commend you for all your work in that area, and for all the amazing work you're doing to, uh, with foster youth. Foster youth and making sure that good legislation is, um, actually passed in the state of California, and that we're looking after our youth. So congratulations to you and your wonderful family. I look forward to continuing to work with you. You're doing amazing work, friend. Thank you very much.
Very good. Back to you, Monica.
Thank you so much, colleagues, and thank you all for your, uh, wonderful remarks. And with that, Christina, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, thank you so much for your incredible work, and congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys. It's for you.
Congratulations. Okay, with that, members, let us now turn to general public comment. Is there a UT? YU TTI? Please come forward. You'll be given one minute to speak on an on-agenda item. UT will be followed by Mia Hayes.
Um, I'm here to call attention to the valet companies that continue to operate illegally in the Arts District. These illegal valets are monopolizing meters and taking street parking away from the public, even parking cars in red zones. For example, meters require payment during the business, which is usually ten hours a day at $2 an hour. These valets often illegally block ten or more metered parking spaces, costing the city nearly $5,000 a month and lost revenue because they rigged the meters into thinking a coin has been deposited. They profit anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 a month without properly paying for permits or occupancy taxes. Not only are they undercutting revenue from honest, law-abiding companies, but the city has lost nearly $115,000 in revenue within that time. Um, I'm here to ask for the council to help address this issue and to help shut down these operations or have them properly going through the permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mia Hayes, please come forward, followed by Claudio Bovell. Good morning.
Good morning. I would like to say, I think this is a travesty of how everyone is copying General Johnny Lee Austin's psychology for basis on prostitution and criminal antics. It's very a shame how everything leads to Crowder in New Orleans for everyone's state of mind through population of economics and social studies. So I'm here on behalf of Martinez and Ofera, and any other that provides information according to my general life that regards New Orleans or Guatemala. I would like this to be broadcast, but it hasn't been broadcast, but I just want you guys to know that other people are following how this judicial system, state and federal, how this has been very illegal, of how you guys have been trying to criminalize me or try to kill me based off of prostitution. Thank you.
Claudio, please come forward, followed by Suzette, and the final speaker of general public comments, Herman.
I'm here today to thank the, um, city council and the governor for signing the motion into law, uh, January, the legal eviction, but my main concern, I'm here, is to, again, inform the city council, there's a backdoor deal has been used, it's called capital improvement. I've interviewed a lot of elderly seniors, and the seniors and elderly people have been illegally kicked out of their apartments or where they live because, once they suffer capital improvement, the rent is increased from $35 to $50, and they just can't afford it. So I'm asking the city council, you need to look at the capital improvement, backdoor deal, to raise the rent, to remove the seniors out of their place of where they live, and just regulate capital improvement because, right now, it's hurting the seniors. I'm involved with seniors, I'm involved in the community, and I'm only here to help the seniors and help anyone in regards to higher rent, because, keep living, a lot of us won't get to the age of being a senior, just, just a matter of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzette, please come forward. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'm really nervous. It's nice to see everybody. Um, thank you for letting me come and speak. I just wanted to say that, um, there is no vacancy control in LA. This means that when somebody moves out of a rent-controlled unit, the landlord can raise the rent to the high-market rates. Now, we've seen the rate, rents go sky-high in the last few years. With all the thousands of units of new buildings being constructed in LA and permitted to be constructed without any low-income units included in the permit process or required in the permit process, um, these rents will also be high for these new units that are being constructed. I understand that the objective of the city is to help house the homeless and also to keep rents down, but by denying the less than 1% of short-term rental hosts to continue to operate, many of whom are seniors, you're not solving the problem, you're actually adding to the problem there. I know that enforcement is expected to make lots of new rentals available, but since there are no vacancy controls, these new places will be offered on the market at the high-market rents.
Thank you.
That doesn't solve the problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your presence. Herman, one minute.
We'll take the fucking streets later, or we'll take the fucking streets again. Rent control's audit control. The moratorium and retroactive rent control is full of fucking nonsense. Well, you gutted out that H-money, measure HH-money, and all those fucking bonds and grants shows you how critical, stupid, ignorant, and malicious po- local political politicians truly are. If I had a caucus short of Herman Jason Weston, I'd caulk it to you as a caucus, but because my name is not Katie Hill, the cunt, bitch, whore, I can stand here and tell you under 42SC 1983, "Save America, Terry T..." T-Fank? No. Terry Tornick from Pasadena, pass the moratorium. Fuck you.
Okay, with that, that concludes general public comment. Members, we have a request from Mr. Corretts to reconsider items, item thirty-seven. Let's take a vote on reconsideration, item thirty-seven. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, on item thirty-seven?
And yes, I'd just like to have us receive and file that item.
Very good. Second, we have a, a second by Mr. Weezer, thank you. So on, on item thirty-seven, a request was made to receive and file, second by Mr. Weezer. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, what's before us?
The council has motions for posting a referral.
Sorry to cut in. Mr. Herman? Posted and referred. I don't, I don't know if you can hear this. Mr. Herman is singing somewhere, it's disrupting our meeting. Okay, let's, let's eject Mr. Herman from the chambers. Thank you. If you can note that, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, um, any announcements, members? The adjourning motions, any adjourning motions? Let's rise for adjourning motions. Seeing to my left, to my right. Okay, with that, we're now adjourned. Let us go forth and serve the people of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Lance, is that correct? You can go on and, and see that.
Absolutely. That's a new feature that we introduced last year. If you're one of those parcel owners that got a notice in the mail, you can check to see have we cleared your property by going to lafd.org and navigate to the brush clearance website, enter your parcel number, and you'll find out whether or not we've cleared your property or not.